Start. Call to order, State and City Council Meeting, Monday, May 21st, 2018. Would you folks join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are all here assembled. Councilor Gladwell is absent, but we are supremely confident that she will find her way here eventually. Let's see. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias?
Mr. Mayor, two of them. First of all, I did eat at a food truck, spud bus, tonight. They're in the agenda for the food truck fees. And secondly, while we're not doing anything formal at this point in time, there's an ordinance pending, or recommended ordinance from planning regarding taxes, property taxes, and development downtown. And I am a party in a company that is currently not doing anything downtown, but has our eyes on two state and properties, so I will actually ask to recuse myself from that discussion and vote, sir.
You mean you're not going to say anything?
Unless it's absolutely necessary.
Is that a promise?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Presentations, comments from the public. Mr. Loftus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is James Loftus, 633 North Third Avenue, Staton. I'm the owner of The Gardener House Cafe and Bed and Breakfast, director of JPLMuseum.org. I guess I'll start off with some good news today. I was able to visit with three classes, first and second graders, at Morningside Elementary in Salem. And we had a blast. One of their favorite pictures was a picture of Jerry Fennick, who was Enos's handler, and Tiger. And Jerry is trapped in a cage, and he's got a banana, and the monkey's actually closing the cage door on him. And the kids really like that picture. And I'm kind of going to use that as a symbol of your mind, that your mind has been put in a cage when you're called out of order to ask questions, when you're an elected official or an appointed official on a budget committee, and the chair continues to harass somebody who's trying to get at information that's pertinent, especially when you find out that, I believe the way the city manager put it, there was a formula error, or cell formatting error, where $312,000 just magically appeared. There's $70,000 sitting in a retirement fund for an employee that gets paid $22,000. There's a lot of anomalies in this budget. There's the question of the marijuana tax issue. I understand that the city manager actually had to sign a sworn statement. However, the documents that came out of the DOJ require him to release that information so that the city can actually know what your revenues are. The fact that you have blocked out the city manager, the chief of police, the planning director, public works director, their payroll is beyond imagination for me, because when we, Brian, were on the council, that information was disclosed. So I don't understand why we're having issues of transparency here, unless you're being kept in the dark. I want you to really consider that. Why are all these anomalies happening? Why were two meetings scheduled back-to-back to where you actually had to open and close one? Is there any real public input? Is there a desire for transparency? Are you trying to hide everything? Do we have an answer for how much revenue was generated off the marijuana tax? Simple question. You're legally obligated to know the answer. And if somebody uses deception in their answer, well, you could call that a lie. And if that's a lie, then you can't trust the individual. And then that requires you to take corrective measures. I leave that for you guys to think about. Chew it over, because if you're being misled in one issue, you could be misled in other issues. You could be taken down a road that you don't want to go down. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, hold on a second, James. You made an assertion, an allegation, that the chairman was harassing people.
No, I just simply said that a person has an obligation to ask questions.
Hold on. You said the chair at the beginning, the budget chair, was harassing people. I am the budget chair, and under no circumstances do I harass anybody.
Okay, excuse me. I will name the individual. I wasn't there. So it would be the chair that was holding the meeting at the time was Paige. So, Brian, I was not accusing you of anything. The chair at that meeting was Paige, and there was some contention going on. And the simple fact of the matter is, is if you're an appointed official or an elected official, you are obligated to not only take the information that he feeds you, okay, because he's trying to keep you like a mushroom, but you have an obligation to go out and get some sunshine and get additional information from other people. I'm not sure your budget complies with Oregon state law. That will be somebody else who will have to make that decision. I'm waiting for you to adopt it.
Gotcha. And there's no need for disparaging comments at people, number one.
I'm not trying to despair anybody. I'm trying to point out that...
The second thing is, the last time when you and I were both on the budget committee, we were talking about salaries. It is against Oregon statutes to provide budget discussion on individual employees and their salaries. You know that.
No, it's not. If you look back on our budgets, you will find line items by line items.
Initially, then that one, that particular year that we addressed it was incorrect. We were advised not to do it from that point forward, and we never did.
Then why do other jurisdictions do it?
Are they in violation? I don't know. And like you said...
I think it has, I think it's important for the people to know what these people are being paid to do the job that they're doing, especially when we have all these different anomalies that are going on. Okay?
Gotcha.
I think that's a right for the citizens to know. It's that simple. You know, it's like, what are you doing with the water and sewer money? You're collecting all these fees, and if you listen to the testimony, there's a huge number that's missing there. And that's right out of the public works director's mouth. You should be investigating that. Where's the difference?
Investigation.
Not in, okay, maybe that's a harsh term. How about inquiry? How about just a simple inquiry? Can you explain the difference? And if you can't, then there's something wrong. And you guys are supposed to be holding these people accountable. Not me. I love this community. I'm leaving it, but I still love it. I'm not attacking you guys. I'm just simply trying to say, look into this. There's some issues. And if you continue and you do it on a faulty process, then it's null and void just by process alone. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Got that one. Steve Poizan? What's on? I probably never say that right. Revitalize Downtown Staton.
My name is Steve Poizan. I live at 1750 East Pine Street in Staton, and I am here as the vice president of Revitalize Downtown Staton, firmly known as Friends of Old Town Staton. And I'm really here just because there's a second reading for ordinance number 1019 on your agenda. I asked Alyssa to include a memo with the information that was given to you tonight because I felt like, in the initial reading, even though the ordinance was passed at that vote, I didn't feel like the issue of expanding the boundaries where that ordinance applied to was addressed. I talked about it in my comments. Dan brought it up again in his comments. But I really didn't hear any discussion about including First Avenue in one of the places that these ordinances apply. And if you were to look at an economic revitalization study that was done for this city several years ago, one of the things that they mentioned in particular was that because our main traffic goes down First Avenue, we need to start there in terms of presenting the image we want for revitalizing our town. And we're trying to do that in our group with some directional signs and that kind of thing. But I believe that these ordinances should also apply to First Avenue. So there's a cohesive vision, cohesive look to First, Second, and Third, particularly in areas like the color palette, awning maintenance, debris management, vegetation management, just some of the basic kind of maintenance issues that this ordinance is meant to address. So when it comes time to, for the second reading today of that ordinance, I would ask you to at least discuss and hope that you would pass that these ordinances also apply to First Avenue, as well as what's currently identified as the downtown core, which is Second and Third. Thank you. Yep?
Ms. Mayor, any other questions? And so, just to clarify, as you're saying, First Avenue between Washington and Water.
Correct.
Right. So you're just talking about the area that coincides, that is directly kind of part of the Old Town?
Parallel. That's the Old Town, downtown area. Yeah.
Just clarifying that.
Mr. Mayor, I just need to say that I do live in the area currently described as RDS or FOTS. I'm an unencumbered property owner in that area, and I have no dog in the fight, if you will, but just a point of clarification of ex-party contact.
Okay. Should we leave your residents in there?
Well, no, I'm just saying, those of us who live in that area need to declare our contacts.
Only if you have financial situations.
No, I'm just saying that out of clarity, we should. And I do say that.
Is there anybody else that lives in that area that maybe should say something about living there?
My understanding was, when I tried to clarify it with the, our attorney was, is that unless it's something that is fiduciary in nature, if we're discussing the downtown area there, and I live in it, unless I have a piece of property for sale, or something else that I really don't need to tell everybody that I live in the downtown area every time that something comes up. So, given that, unless someone tells me differently, no, I don't need to. And I haven't discussed this, nor have I been at any meeting where anybody's discussed this, nor do I know anything about it, so.
Well, you just moved to town, so you wouldn't be expected to know anything about it.
Right. That's true.
Geez. I love it. And let the record show, Councilor Gladwell has wandered in, and so we're a full group this evening. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. So, let's go to work. Any other comments from the public? I should offer a real thank you to Ms. Paige Hook for chairing that meeting of the budget committee. I thought for someone that perhaps hadn't done our budget committee before, she did an admirable job. And indulged many, many questions and lots and lots of just comments. So, if that helps people wander in off the street and want to attack the process, yeah. Okay. Consent agenda, April 16th, City Council minutes, acceptance of right-of-way deed for dedication of extension to Kendall Way, and a resolution accepting CDBG housing rehab grant. What are your wishes on this, folks?
I move we accept the city minutes, the city council minutes, as given.
As presented?
As presented. I did attend a Pacific Power Blue Skies Energy Conservation Summit, but that has nothing to do with Kendall Way, but I'm just letting you know. And I move we accept the right-of-way dedication, and also to the CDBG housing rehabilitation grant.
How about just the consent agenda as presented?
Yeah, but I want to let everybody know I attended a Pacific Power meeting on energy conservation because of the...
Oh.
So, yes, so moved.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
I motion at a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. And let's have a vote on that. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Post same sign. No opposition. We declare that passed, and move right along to, there's no public hearing tonight. Unfinished business, ordinance number 1018, establishing licensee requirements and standards for mobile food units, and resolution number 975, establishing fees for mobile food unit license. The staff report, Mr. Flashman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the, I believe, third time that ordinance 1018 has been before the council for your consideration. Staff brought it to you back in early April. You, at that time, we asked that you make some changes to the ordinance as it was presented in the packet, and you asked staff to do some additional outreach to the business owners that would be affected by it. We came back to you, having made the changes into the draft ordinance that we had wanted to do, and having done that outreach at the April 16th meeting. You had a roomful of people at that time that testified in favor of the ordinance. There was some discussion April 16th about the provision regarding locating mobile food units so that a sidewalk is not blocked. That has been changed, as the council requested, to rather than specify that the unit has to be five feet away from a sidewalk, to provide some discretion in the interpretation, but to require that the unit be located so that the queue of customers at an ordering or serving window do not block a public sidewalk, and that shall allow a continuous through pedestrian zone of at least five feet in width along the sidewalk. That kind of mirrors the language that's currently in the land use code regarding placing signs in the sidewalks in the downtown zone. That same type of language is in those sign standards. The other change from the April 16th draft is that there was previously a requirement that operators of a mobile food unit are responsible for litter patrol while they're open and as they're closing up and moving away. And at the council's request, that has been eliminated from the ordinance. So with that, ordinance 1018 is before you again for your consideration. Also accompanying it is a resolution that establishes the fee for the ordinance. That has not changed since the last time you saw it. Staff is still proposing an annual license with a fee of $40. I will note that the copy of resolution 975 that you have in your packet still refers to the 16th day of April, but the copy that was printed for signature by the mayor, should it be adopted, does have this evening's date on it.
Okay.
With that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, this is, there's been a lot of discussion about this, but council, where do you, where do you want to go with this? It may be close to a final form on it. Councilor Cronequist?
One quick clarification question for Dan. Under four standards, a mobile food unit, including all items associated with the operations, shall not obstruct pedestrian pathways, driveways, or driveways, or any off-street parking area. Is that, does that apply to private property as well, or not?
Yes, it does apply to private property.
But if, for instance, at Howl at the Moon, the flots thing that Councilor Gladwell was ahead of or in charge of, we had a food truck in Monty's parking lot that probably blocked access for Monty's Quits and Guns. I mean, I don't, I mean, if we can make it accepting private property, I mean, if the accountants choose to put a food truck so it blocks their driveway, doesn't matter? Baldwin, Council, or whatever?
I thought this didn't apply to events.
Well, no, this is to, if somebody were to put a food truck in the driveway of the accounting company next to the parklot, and it blocked their driveway, but with the approval of the accounting company, does it, I mean, do we care if it's on private property?
We require food trucks to be located on private property. So all of these regulations regarding the location of a food truck apply to private property. And the idea is that the parking area and the designated parking spot still be available for other customers.
Okay. I just don't want somebody to get in trouble for going, getting permission to put a food truck there and blocking parking on private property when the owner says, sure, go ahead, we're closed on Saturdays. I just wanted clarification.
That'd be trespassing, if they didn't have permission from the...
No, no, they have permission.
I'm saying, if they didn't have permission...
They have permission to be there. Building is closed.
Then they can't, so they just can't extend it to the right-of-way. That's all, correct?
All right. We got that one. Other questions, thoughts, or... Or... Are you folks comfortable with this, as it's written and rewritten and hatched over and thought about now? Go ahead.
So is, am I right, Dan, that this is, this is talking about outside of special events, like Summerfest, or Howl at the Moon, or anything else? This is stuff that is outside of someone who has a permit for a special event? Is that correct?
If enacted, this new section of code would require a license to be required by any mobile food operator who wants to operate in the city.
So every...
The, the part about events is that the proposed code says that unless you are part of an event that has a permit from the city, if you're going to be in place for more than 72 hours without moving, then we're going to put you through a land use process and treat you like a brick-and-mortar restaurant.
Okay. So then it is not in lieu of, in other words, so every food truck or food operator that signs up and pays for a booth at Summerfest also will have to pay the city $40. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well, no, that is, that is not correct. Everybody who has a mobile food unit as defined in this code, which is not every food vendor at Summerfest, because if you come with a, as I described the April meeting, if you just come with a trailer full of kitchen equipment, and you unload it off of the trailer and set up someplace with your mobile kitchen equipment and start preparing food, by this definition, you're not a mobile food unit. If you show up in a truck and you keep all the equipment on the truck and start preparing food, then you are a mobile food unit. So my experience at Summerfest is that most of the food vendors there are setting up stuff on the sidewalk, or on the, in the parking lane, and preparing food.
The Kiwanis, the Kiwanis onion ring booth would have to pay $40.
If it stays in a trailer, then it would be a mobile food unit.
And so are we going to have people that are, that are actually going around to events and monitoring that sort of thing? Is that what we're going to be doing?
That will be up to the police department.
I just don't, I just don't like stuff that now requires enforcement, that we're not going to do. So only people who actually get reported get ticketed for it, and other people don't get ticketed for it.
Dan, the mobile food carts will have an annual license anyway. They could be there on Summerfest, and Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and New Year's Day.
But the Kiwanis one is only, the Kiwanis one is only here one time.
Well, but, no, but there's a difference between these one-day things.
Mr. Mayor.
There's not, Mr. Mayor.
As drafted, the ordinance defines a mobile food unit as a motor vehicle, trailer, or wagon that's used for preparing, processing, converting food for immediate consumption, et cetera.
Brian, do you have a comment or thought?
I thought my recollection from last time is that we were talking about events like Woodstock, or something like that, and we've talked about the mayor, I'm sorry, the police chief being able to waive that requirement. Was that not the case?
That was the sidewalk one.
Right. The change that got made to provide some discretion and enforcement as to whether complying, rather than setting a line that you shall not cross, dealt with the location of where a unit is parked in relation to the sidewalk.
So, Dan, hypothetically, if Spud Bus, who's back there tonight, were to put the spud bus on my bridge to serve the brewery, my bridge being private property, that is blocking my parking to my garage and carport, and they would have my consent, this is hypothetical, would that, they appear to be in violation of four, and also can we put wording in here that exempts the one-time events? I thought we discussed this in the first reading, where we had wording saying exempting permitted events like Summerfest. I mean, the Kiwanis people are only here once a year.
We, we can write the code, however, the council directs us to...
I just want to make good law.
I don't have recollection of being directed to make that change from the last time we had this discussion. I mean, I think there was discussion...
It was discussed, it was never directed.
But there wasn't, it wasn't included in the motion that was made, or the direction saying, please change this.
Please change it.
Go ahead.
So my concern with that is the fact that most events are actually fundraisers of some kind for some local group, or something else, and to do anything that might lower the chances of participation by people because they have to pay that additional fee, because it would be an additional fee because they were paying a fee to participate. I guess I, and again, I don't like things that we're not going to enforce, and I don't see using our police officers' time to enforce whether or not it's a mobile unit or not a mobile unit at an event, that the event is already responsible for giving them, giving them a permit to be part of their event.
Okay. Let's suggest something to lead us out of this swamp.
Can we amend this, Dan, to allow one-day amend exemptions without going back for another reading and re-proposal?
Well, you, no. If you're going to make an amendment, it will require a second consideration, which means it would come back in two...
To where are we?
In three weeks, or two weeks, whatever the next meeting is.
Keith, have you got a thought on this?
I mean, I think Dan has said it. If we make an amendment, we'd have to bring it back for a second reading.
Okay.
If, if there's no changes and it's adopted as presented, and it's unanimous, if there's a no vote, we'd have to bring it back for consideration as well.
Correct. That's what the charter requires.
Or if it's amended, we'd have to bring it back.
Right.
Okay. That's fine.
I would like to see it amended, if everyone's in agreement.
I move we direct our planning commission to add an exemption for one-day permitted events for food truck exceptions.
So, how would you police that, though?
Chris?
So, let's say that somebody, there's an event in February, and a food truck sets up for February. October rolls around, and they say, oh, this is my one-time, I wasn't here in February. How would you...
No, not a one-time, no, the event.
You're exempting them.
No, one, Summerfest is one event.
If we do an Oktoberfest, that's an exempted citywide event, so...
So one event would be exempted.
No, no, the Kiwanis onion ring wagon shows up twice, they only come once a year for Summerfest. There's the elephant ears guy who comes once a year for Summerfest, and I think a snow cone guy is probably a food truck or not, I don't know, but he's there too. These are just, and if they came in October, so for a second citywide event, where we close down the streets, where it's an event, not just showing up at Wolfgang's, that's what I'm talking, that...
It has nothing to do with one time. It has to do with it being a sponsored event. Any sponsored event, we don't need to worry about it. The event people are going to worry about, we don't need to worry about whether somebody has a permit or not.
The only sponsored event is Summerfest at this point in time.
No, we have, well, we have the car show.
Well, it's part of Summerfest.
Not really, but anyway, any sponsored event, we don't deal with. We don't, we don't go, we would need to do just the opposite. If we don't pass this, then we will have to look at whether or not everybody, you know, whether they're mobile or not mobile, and we just say, you know what, if we're having an event and the people are paying to be part of the event, then they're good.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, how about we put a line and insert a line there somewhere and leave it up to the city administrator to determine the waiveability of the fee or not for an event? Does that work?
I don't like that.
Would that work, Dan? Or does that even solve anything?
Well, I think the waiveability of the, if the issue is the fee, then that could or should be addressed in the resolution that establishes the fee, not in the code that requires a license.
Gotcha.
And there's no reason to consider the resolution until you've enacted the ordinance.
I move we send it back to adopt the discussed item of exempting, exempting food trucks from citywide events from the fee and inspection.
Well, we're not there yet.
And, and Mark, and Councilor Congress, I need you to be very careful with your motions. I'm not aware of anything that takes place here that I would consider to be a citywide event, to quote what your motion was.
Good point, thank you.
So think about what it is you want to do, take a couple of seconds to formulate the right words in your head before they come out of your mouth, and then we can do it. But if you're going to ask us to write something about citywide events, I'm not quite sure it's going to accomplish anything.
Dan, how would you suggest, because I'm thinking of.
Sponsored events?
By whom? I'm thinking of, Summerfest is an annual occurrence, but Howl at the Moon was a.
It was a sponsored event.
I mean, how would, Dan, I'm searching for the term and I apologize for not using the right term. You know, Summer, Howl at the Moon was a one-off until 100 years from now or 200, it won't ever happen again in Staton, but it should be, the food trucks there should have been exempted as the ones that Summerfest should be, and I don't know what the right term is and I apologize.
Well, I think the first decision the council needs to make is do you want to exempt people from the licensing requirement, or do you only want to exempt them from the fee? Or is your concern about the location of where they set up and you still want them to get a license to operate in the city? So those, I think those are the three issues you need to look at.
Well, Dan, it seems, here in the middle, it seems like we're talking about, you really can't do just fees and then exemptions and whatnot and special, special events. I keep coming back to this, this idea that the food carts, the ones that we're going to see every week or every other day or every day, will have an annual license. If they want to do something for a special event, a one-day-off event, Howl at the Moon or Summerfest or October Madness or whatever, they're here already. We don't need another fee from them.
They wouldn't, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe that's too simplistic, but that's the way I'm seeing it. Go ahead, Brian.
Those, those vendors that have, had established the fee, paid the $40, when the event comes up, they're in.
They're in already.
Correct. So that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
Yep, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think the issue is the fee. I don't want to speak of everybody, but I think the issue itself is the fee. I want the license to be in place. I think what I was told is that it makes us onerous for the people that are already paying fees to come to that event in particular, Summerfest, and pay another $40 on top of everything else they have to pay for. That's, that was addressed to me.
I don't want to redo that.
None of us do, Hank, that's why we're asking that question.
Okay, but first the ordinance.
So if, if the issue is the fee, then address that in the resolution that establishes fees.
Yep.
If the issue is the requirement to get a license, then we can exempt them in the statement of who needs to get a license. And if the issue is, is the, the regulations themselves shouldn't apply to some people, then let's address that issue in the regulations.
So can we say that we would like for the fee to be non-applicable where a food cart has paid a fee to be part of an event?
That'd be in the fee discussion, right?
Right. That would be part of the discussion on the, that we can make that change.
Off to the resolution.
Right, we can make that change to the resolution if the ordinance is enacted.
Ordinance 1018. We'll do fees in a little bit here.
So we would be okaying an ordinance with the wrong information in it?
We're going to make law, we need to make it right.
The ordinance does not establish a fee.
What does it say? The proposed resolution establishes the cost of an annual license as $40.
Exactly. The resolution establishes the fee. The resolution will require a separate vote than passing the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1018.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1018.
We have discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Dan, if we approve this, section two requires a license even for the Kiwanis onion rings person who's here once a year.
Absolutely.
And I think that a majority of the council, at least some of the council, say, and a license is a fee, is it not?
The fee for the license will be established.
On the resolution.
In the resolution.
If we pass this one, then we're putting the fee on them. It says in section two, license required.
If I walk down and say, I'd like to have a license, you say, they'll have paperwork, here you go, and there's no money exchanged, I still obtain the license.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to make that long.
Enactment of the ordinance requires the issuance of a license. We have then presented you with a resolution to be adopted by the council as a separate action, which would establish a fee for obtaining that license.
Okay, we'll clarify that. Thank you, Dan.
Other thoughts and questions? Other considerations? Are you ready to vote?
Yes, please.
Alyssa, would you poll the council, please, on ordinance 1018?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Gleidman?
Yes.
Counselor Uselman?
Yeah.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, good. If the vote is unanimous, let's see, ordinance 1018 is enacted and will be presented to his honor for his approval, which he will grant, gratefully grant. That isn't right, but that's all right. And then we go to resolution number 975. Whereas ordinance 1018 enacts a requirement for operators of mobile food units to obtain a city-issued license and requires a fee for such a license to be established by resolution, and whereas it is appropriate that a fee for a mobile food unit license be reflected of the city's costs and administration and enforcement and other wonderful things. Now therefore be it resolved, a mobile food unit license fee is established at $40, and that is an annual fee, and the resolution shall become effective upon the adoption by the state and city council. So we have resolution 975. What do you folks want to do with it? Now's the chance to talk about Monet. Versus Monet?
So is there any?
Go ahead.
Dan, you're, you're kind of the expert on this. So is there, what is, say, the difference between somebody who comes and is the Lutheran church and they're, they're doing snow cones out of a trailer with an ice machine and with all the other stuff, and the Spud Bus? Is there a business license that's different between them? I'm looking for some difference that is between them that we can say that this kind of food thing has to have their, the $40 license per year, but the Lutheran church that's doing snow cones out of the back of the trailer doesn't have to do it. So I, I guess I'm looking for like a difference that is there that we can say it without being too ambiguous. Like if you have a business license to do food, then you qualify as a full-time food bus. If you are a nonprofit that are doing snow cones, you don't qualify as a food bus. They probably don't have a business license as a food vendor. So can we say that people that have business licenses as food vendors have to have the $40 and people who don't, don't, or?
The city of Staton does not have business licenses. So that's not a distinction to make. You could, but I will urge you not to, you could make the distinction you just made of someone who is a mobile food unit as a for-profit enterprise versus someone who is a food unit for a, as a charitable fundraiser. You could make that distinction. The reason I urge you not to is that when the city, as the resolution states, the fee that is proposed is reflective of the city's costs for administration and enforcement of the licensing provisions, and I would suggest that the city's costs of administration and enforcement don't change because one vendor is raising money to give to charity and the other vendor is raising money to go buy groceries and pay the doctor and pay rent.
No, but I might be willing to let the city absorb the cost for the nonprofit.
If you want the city to do that, my advice would be to appropriate funds and have the city.
And again.
Have the city reimburse so that you don't get into that.
And I, and I wasn't actually in the nonprofit. I use that as an example. Again, what I, what I'm wanting to say is if somebody's here for Summerfest selling food, I don't want them to have to pay the same $40 that the Spud Bus is paying when they are selling food 300 days a year on the street and this guy is just here for Summerfest. I don't care whether he's actually nonprofit or not. So I do business and even though the city of Staton doesn't, doesn't give me a business license, I have a state business license. I'm required to have a license by the state. Do you know if those, if the other businesses have to have, be registered with the state? Yeah? Yeah, so if you have a business registered with the state, it's that simple, then you pay the $40. If you don't have a business that's registered with the state, then you don't. Which means it's a hobby, not a business.
I would suggest that you go back to thinking about who is it that you want to exempt from paying the fee? If it's a vendor who's here one day a year as part of a quote organized event, and we'd have to figure out what that means, and how do you distinguish an organized event from an event that is either disorganized or unorganized?
Someone sponsors it or not sponsors it?
Right. Then because it is a sponsored event, because perhaps it gets a permit, license or other approval from the police department for closing down the streets or, or having a procession or whatever, then you don't need a, you don't, you are exempt from paying the fee.
Dan, I think that this is being a lot more difficult than what it is. I think that, that it would be not that difficult to write up something that says that somebody that has a license from the police department for an event does not have to pay the $40 and people who are doing regular business pay the $40. I don't know why it seems so difficult to do that.
When considering this, for the enforcement part of it, it makes it very, very difficult if you, you need to define what kind of type of events you want that to be or if you want all events. I do numerous event permits every year, throughout the year, many more than what you would realize are out there. The definition in the code for an event is any procession of people and/or vehicles using the public right of way in the nature of an event, including a parade, but generally should not apply to a funeral procession at the direction of the chief of police. And so I fill those permits out during the summer, just about every week. There's one business in town that gets a permit every other weekend throughout the whole year for a blockage of part of the street, and that's considered an event. And so if, if there, a brewery happens to come into town that wants to block off a portion of the street for an event and they want to do that every other weekend or once a month, that becomes an event and then that you would have to consider that when you're doing this, that under what you're doing, that would be a free event.
Right, and actually, that's, you make my point, exactly. You do so many events that if we're going to go around and enforce that everybody has a permit that's at every event, you're going to be doing a lot of work. If you just make it so that if it's a sponsored event and they have a permit, you don't need to worry about it now, you don't need to be out there at every event making sure that they have a permit. You have a lot of work if you're going to hit every event and enforce this law.
Except the fact that most of these events are for profit.
I don't care if they're for profit or not. They're, they're, again, they're not, it's not, if, if the people that are there are doing it all the time around town, they will already have a license. So the only people that won't be paying a license are people that are not doing it anywhere else except for at that event or at a few sponsored events. And that's fine.
I would suggest the council is coming around to my way of thinking on this, but that may not be. Brian, thought or question?
I see this as no different than the times that the city, a large city, waives the parking enforcement for a day. So in the ordinance, you could just put, except for the weekend of Summerfest and call it good.
But what about Howl at the Moon?
I don't, it's, all I'm concerned about is Summerfest because that's the largest event we have in the city.
I would certainly agree with that.
My point is, but, okay, my point is that Summerfest is it right now, but what if we create, what if RDS creates good events like UFO Fest in McMinnville or something?
Then they can come back and ask us to do that. But Summerfest really is the only big event right now, so I'd be happy with that one.
That was my recommendation, so.
Yeah.
Where do you want to go?
Can we amend it to add Summerfest, Keith, or do we need to rewrite it?
Are you asking me? Are you looking at me and talking to Keith?
I was asking, well, somebody, do we?
Yes, you, you can amend it, and that's why we give you suggested motions that say, I move we adopt it as.
I understand.
So Dan, can we?
Fill in the blank. So the suggestion I heard was to add a sentence to the resolution that says there shall be no fee for mobile food units that operate on the, on the last Saturday of July.
Correct.
That's right.
We can do that?
So moved.
Does it, it would take a motion to do that and then you still have to come back? Would you have to come back and?
Because this is a resolution.
I'll second it.
Would you state your motion, please?
I move that we amend the resolution 975, resolution adopting fees for mobile food units to accept those here on the last Saturday of July participating in events of Summerfest or the car show, or last Saturday of July.
Last Saturday of July.
Thank you.
Period.
Has already been moved in a second? There's a second to it as well. So call for a question, please, Mr. Mayor.
And was it called for the question?
Yes.
We've got a motion and an amendment or an addition to it to include no fees for those mobile food carts on the last Saturday in July, which happens to coincide with Summerfest.
Like Wednesday.
And approval, okay? So, resolution 975. Alyssa, would you?
Sure.
Do your deed again, please?
Of course. Counselor Uselman?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Gleidman?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Super, all right, thank you. What is next? What be next?
In the ordinance.
Where did you go agenda? Okay, let's see, buildings and public, this is 1019, we're moving right along here. Ordinance number 1019 amending title six, eight and 15 of the state municipal code promoting maintenance of buildings and public spaces. Mr. Fleischer?
Thank you. So ordinance 1019 was put before you back at your April 16 meeting. The council approved the first consideration of it with an amendment regarding the language for landscaped areas. This is the, this is a collection of provisions that was brought forward to you by Revitalize Downtown Staton. Downtown Staton. It has provisions that are spread through several different titles of municipal code. Some of them apply citywide, such as the requirement that owners of pets are responsible for picking up pet waste off the sidewalk. That applies citywide. Others apply only to the downtown area. And in those provisions that apply to only the downtown area, the references in the ordinance are to the areas designated as downtown in the comprehensive plan map, which, as Mr. Poisson pointed out in his comments at the beginning of the meeting, does not include First Avenue, even though First Avenue is included in the city's downtown revitalization plan. That plan recognized that there was a fundamental difference between Second and Third Avs and First Ave and suggested different zoning and plan designation for Second and Third So the change that was made from the -- as was required by the motion that was passed is regarding the language referring to landscaped areas. I'll answer any other questions you have, and otherwise it's ready for your second consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Questions, thoughts?
How, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
How do we go about amending the ones that apply to downtown to also include the
We would need to...
We just change the wording?
Well, it's more than just changing the wording because it would be changing in Chapter...
Everywhere where it says downtown, can we say downtown and First Street between Water and Washington?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the way to do -- that would be a simple way to do it, certainly for Chapter 812, for Chapter 512. There's a paragraph that talks on page two of the ordinance, that's Section 1512020, scope of regulations. The downtown core is defined as the area downtown in the comprehensive plan map, and then add the language, "and" First Avenue from Water to Washington.
Okay.
And that phrase, "and" First Avenue from Water to Washington, could be added into both Section 2 and Section 3 of the ordinance.
So can we do that? Would people be agreeable to us doing that? So that we have continuity of that, of what the revitalization area is, which is what that group has decided. I mean, and actually, that was decided because the Brown House and the other property people there wanted to be part of that.
Okay. So just have that phrase into any time it's mentioned, the area?
Mm-hmm. So we're not changing the downtown core area. That's still the same. We're just saying, "and" that these specific things would apply. Doesn't mean that everything that applies to the core area applies to this, that what we're just looking at now would apply.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, is there a -- if we extend that, is there a public notice period to the business owners in First Avenue, Cascade Highway? Just point of order.
This is not a land use regulation. There was not a public hearing on this ordinance. There was comments made to the council last month that Revitalize Downtown Staton, perhaps when it was still Friends of Old Town Staton, had done outreach to either all of the business owners and/or the property owners about these regulations. But there was no notice from the city and there was not a public hearing. And there is none required.
As acting in good faith, do we need to let them know? Because I am hearing that their outreach efforts were not as successful as they stated, and I asked them on the stand and, you know, and I'm hearing that their outreach efforts were...
It certainly...
You know, I want to be fair to Annie's Family Haircuts or whomever.
Mark, I agree with you. I've heard from several people who said it wasn't as successful as you're stating. In fact, some of the things that are enacted so far, not even enacted yet, people are already reacting to it in a negative fashion. Where are the rest of the merchants that are supposedly behind all this and supportive of it? You don't see anybody here, and why is that? I wouldn't tell you that silence is consent. I think we owe it to the merchants to do a little bit better job of telling them what's actually in here and how it's going to affect their business before we pass this.
So you personally would like to defer action on this?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
They're not here because they didn't know that they should be here.
Absolutely.
Right. And if the folks from the downtown revitalization are doing what they said they were doing and going down there saying, "Here's what's taking place," not just handing out a piece of paper and saying, "Here's what's going on," and turn around and walk out.
Okay.
But they're saying, "Here's what's going on, here's what it is."
You know what? It doesn't matter what you do, and you know this. When you do things, you have, I'm going to say, out of...
Sure.
Seventy businesses, three or four that have this bad -- that want to say bad, and I've also heard them, and boy, do they speak loud and clear, but they do not speak for everyone down there. As a matter of fact, they do not speak for the majority of people down there.
And if that's the case, then why is the minority -- why is the majority not here?
Because there was no reason.
And when you referenced a minute ago, you said that group in discussions with this downtown revitalization committee. It has to have the folks in this community, have businesses downtown, be involved in it. They have to be here to understand what's actually taking place, and I don't think they are, from what I've seen.
Mr. Quigley's point is well taken, Mr. Mayor.
Let me give you an example, since we're talking about the First Avenue thing. And we're talking about color palette, right? Do you know what trade dress is? You know what trade dress is? You know what trade dress is, right? Your business has trade dress.
Purple color for mini-vans.
Sure you do. What you have budget lines on your side is trade dress, right?
Oh, okay. 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 I thought you were asking me something.
So let's take, for example, if we wanted to relocate business on First Street between this new area we're talking about, and what if that was a national company or a company that wanted to have trade dress to begin with? And it was in oppose -- it was in opposition to the color palette? What would they be able to do?
Come and ask for an exemption.
Come and ask. That's onerous to the business.
Have you been to any of the downtown meetings with all of the businesses that do go to them?
Where are they?
There's only six people.
No, but they're in other meetings.
All right.
The ones that don't show up and just complain aren't there.
It's not just showing up and complaining. Let's take, for example, the grassroots effort. Look at all the folks that were here from us when the Sign Code came into effect. All those folks were there, and we walked through it step by step, page by page, to help them.
Brian, we don't need them to be here anymore.
We don't need them.
No, because we have a group that represents them. They go to the group now.
I beg to differ with you. I was -- I beg to differ with you. I've spoken to numerous people that have business downtown, and they're feeling...
Why aren't they here?
They're feeling...
Because they don't know about it, Priscilla.
They relate it to me, and they're -- and why they're here, not here? They're not here because they're afraid of causing a problem, because that's how they're being pursued.
I hear also from both groups, and it's -- and again, it's I hear from the same two or three kind of people.
Do you know that there's a business downtown that pulled their planner box out and put it away because of when they walked in and said, "Here's what's taking place," you said, "I'm not dealing with that, forget it." That's not the kind of response you want to have to this.
I talked to a business that said that he talked to one of those people that told him all kinds of erroneous information, and when I told him that none of it was true, he said, "Really? None of that's true?" I said, "No. It's all -- it's a couple of people going around making up stuff, and you know what? Can't do anything about it." But go ahead. Steve has his hand up. I'd like to hear what he had to say.
Let me interject something here. Steve, would you -- would you care to comment on any of -- any or all of this?
I would love to.
And we'll get back into it in a minute here, but among us, but...
I believe, I agree with Priscilla, that there are two sides to the story, and it does seem to us like the people that are naysayers in general do have the louder voice in this town on many, many issues, not only the ones that we present. I also believe that it is the job of the city council to make some rules that are for the good of the city, whether all of the residents of the city agree with that or not. And I would use, for an example, the animal waste part of this. I think it's okay for the city council to say, "We do not want to have a city where there are dog waste piles on every sidewalk in town, so we're going to say, like every other town in Oregon, that we are going to require our citizens to pick up." I don't need to ask the pet owners if they're okay with that or not. I think that's for the good of the city. And I think, given that the council has charged our group with making recommendations about what will improve the vitality of the downtown area, that is what we're doing. And I'm not sure that you need to have every particular merchant that might have an opinion weigh in on that in order for you to take action.
How about one?
Two.
There hasn't been any merchants here an entire time you've been going through this.
I disagree with that.
Steve?
There are merchants in our group that have been here. No one was here today from our group except me because no one knew that this second reading had to happen.
And the last time that I was here, which I was only here for the first one, there were about 10 people here, so.
Of the group.
Those are all business owners. But our group is made largely of business owners.
Steve, how many people are...
Just a minute. You're done?
I'm done.
All right.
Steve, two questions. First of all, I asked you point blank last time you were here for the first reading. Did you reach out to the business owners on First Street?
And my answer was yes.
And you affirmed that you did.
Yes.
And I think that I'm not the only person on this dais that got an earful of arrows from business owners on First Street that you did not successfully reach out to. Secondly, how -- when's your next board meeting?
Thursday.
How many people are on the board? Five?
Yes.
Four? Three?
Five.
How many people are promoted? What happened to Third Thursday? Your organization needs to build itself and build credibility and reach out to the business owners. I shop at local businesses. I had dinner at Spudbus tonight. I had coffee at the Swang or whatever it is, the pizza, the... Yeah, but when I'm going in there, they say, "How are you, City Council?" And then they give us their opinions. I can tell you, Monte is furious at RDS. I can tell you Glenn's funeral service is furious at RDS. It's not my job nor my role to take that furor. There are also people who are trying to put together a murals program for the city. Carmella at the council chamber, and she's reading your -- our law as for banning murals like they have in Staton because of the color palette that's chosen. We need to consider -- that's the whole point I bring up these things is because I want to make laws that are good laws. And if it seems like I'm quite picky, it's because what we do affects people, and those things that we do, we need to make sure that people are aware of it and that they have a chance to have public input like they did on the Sign Code and are invited. We can't just spring this on a whole other triage of this community and say, "Whoop-de-doo, look at us. We made law." Yeah, we're elected to represent people, but we need to let them know and let them have comment as to what they're doing.
And that is why I spent an hour and a half talking with Monte last week. So I don't know when you got an earful from him, whether it's before or after I spoke with him. I have a meeting with Glenn tomorrow because I have heard that he has some concerns.
So there...
You did tell me, and other people have told me.
But Steve, I asked him to make a comment here. Let him talk. Please. Folks?
Hey!
Sorry. Go ahead, please, Steve.
Re- revitalization. Yes, of course. But I think it's too onerous.
I guess, with all respect, Counselor Cronquist, you are continuing an argument that we've been having by email for the last week, and I'm not sure that's appropriate for this particular forum. That's not why I'm here today.
Steve, I'm not arguing with you. I told you, first of all, that you brought other people into the argument, Keith and Dan prematurely and board members, that I think that RDS needs to look at its soul and needs to work with the chamber, and if you really wanted to go into those emails, I will. But I think that all of that, your mission is valid, and I've supported you in giving my garage over to building parties and my giving my house over to storing the stuff, and the metal furniture out there, for the most part, on the parklet is from me. You know, I do what I can. The books in the bookshelf are from me. But we've got to get people to support it. We can't rule from above like the Soviet Union. We've got to get people to support us.
I would agree with that. What I'm disagreeing with is the extent that you're claiming there's a lack of support. I believe there are people that do not support anything, basically, from what I can tell, and certainly don't support some of the things that we are recommending. I personally have talked to a number of merchants that do support what we're doing. These are very basic ordinances we're requesting, things like picking up dirt out of the front of your store. We're not requiring things they do with their building or things that present what they can do. In fact, your point about the color palette and the trade, whatever you called it...
Trade dress.
This particular ordinance does not address the color palette whatsoever, so that has nothing to do with this conversation. That was passed in an earlier ordinance.
That was an example of why I think it was being onerous, an example of why -- and that was the first portion of it. Anyways, that's -- we're done. I'm done.
So I guess I would ask you to do -- you ask our organization to make recommendations based on the Main Street model for how to start to revitalize the downtown, and that's what we are doing, and it's up to you to decide whether you want to support what we're doing or not. And I believe we have made great effort to try to reach out to the merchants that are going to be involved. I don't think any of these particular ordinances are onerous to any merchant in town. I think they're actually pretty common sense, but it's to address the few people that do not follow common sense and keep the front of their stores clean and so on. And if you choose to wait until you have everybody's consent to do that, I don't think it will ever happen.
It's not consent, it's awareness we see now.
I believe we've done as much as we can to raise awareness.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, what do you folks want to do with this? Ordinance 1019, amending Titles 6, 8, and 15 of the State Municipal Code promoting maintenance of buildings and public spaces. Counselor?
Where's the little thing that tells us where to read it at?
Approve the modification to reject.
Oh, okay.
Beginning. Second, behind the second.
Okay. See, I got to have my sheet in order to do... I move to approve ordinance number 1019 as presented.
Okay.
Oh, right, to include the modification. I'm sorry, to include the modification that we put First Street between Washington and Water wherever it says the downtown core.
I second.
Okay, with Washington and Water.
So if I may, I think what you really wanted to do was to move to request the staff incorporate those changes into the ordinance.
That is, thank you, Dan.
And bring it back to you.
That is what I wanted.
Because the ordinance has already received its first consideration and approval.
Okay. So I would ask that the staff make those changes and bring it back to us.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a discussion for a second?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Dan, in the ordinance itself, I want to clarify this for a minute. The second violation of the complaint, so the code enforcement officer goes out there, finds a violation, issues the citation, whatever, and they find them in violation of a second time or they don't correct it from the first encounter. Am I reading this correctly, that a lien will be placed on their property by the city?
The way the enforcement procedure is written in the ordinance, if the ordinance officer determines there's a violation, they send a written notice. It's not a -- it's not -- it's a -- it's just a letter saying there's a problem here.
Gotcha.
Give them -- it's been a while since I've read this. Gives them, yeah, I believe it's 30 -- yes, gives them 30 days to correct the situation. 30 days goes by, the situation's not corrected, then there is a formal notice of violation that is sent and an order of abatement, and they are provided, again, another...
10 days.
10 days to correct the situation. And then the penalty is... Ten days to correct the situation. And then, the penalty is deter, they get a citation and go to municipal court.
Okay. But where was the, where's the lien come in?
The lien would come in if the city had any costs to recover, if it took action.
If it had to clean up the property.
Right. So if there's not compliance with the order of violation, the code officer issues a citation, records a notice with all recording costs to be the responsible of the owner, and initiates an accounting for all costs associated with the proceedings.
Five C. You see that prime?
Yeah, I got it.
Right. And then, if there are costs that are not reimbursed, then there'd be a municipal lien placed on it, like we do when we abate nuisance situations.
Right, it's exactly the same as any other time that the city has to go in and do anything. It's in line with everything else.
All right. We're under discussion. I'm wondering if we shouldn't...
I can't fill a question.
Item three, just a second, please. Return the ordinance to staff for modification prior to consideration. Is that kind of where?
That is, that is the motion, Councilor Gladwell, intended to make.
So it's item, option three there on the...
Yeah.
Okay. You folks done? Let's go to a vote then. Alyssa, one more time.
Counselor. Eusselman?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
No.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Three to two, okay. So the ordinance will be...
Will be back on June four.
Will be back on June fourth. All right.
So can I just clarify something with Brian? Brian, would you like other business owners to be at that June fourth thing to show their support? Is that, would that make you feel better?
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, next. Building, new business, ordinance 1020, establishing a vertical housing development zone. Mr. Flashman?
I'm back. So, council may recall that staff approached you in, I believe it was January, with the concept of a vertical housing development zone. And at that time, the council gave direction to staff to proceed with the development of an ordinance, and to notify the other taxing jurisdictions. As a recap, and for benefit of the members of the audience, a vertical housing development zone provides a partial exemption on property taxes to either new buildings, or buildings that are substantially renovated, that are multi-story buildings and mixed use. For every floor of the building that is used for residential use, there is a 20% exemption on the value of the improvements, not the land. An exemption can be applied to the land if the residential units are reserved for occupancy by low-income individuals. So if there was a new building built that was three stories tall, had two floor, had one floor of commercial, and two floors of residential, that building could receive a 40% exemption on the value of the improvements.
Need everyone to kind of focus on the presentation, please.
I thought you were gathering knee down.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you, Dan.
So, that, in a nutshell, is what the vertical housing development zone does. The downtown revitalization plan suggests, recommends, calls for the city to consider enacting it. Last year, the legislature changed the law. It used to be that municipalities applied to the state to have one. The change in the legislation essentially says, "Cities may do this. Pass an ordinance and it's done." So before, under the changes to the law, before we do this, we have to provide notice to the other taxing jurisdictions, and there are seven taxing jurisdictions with authority within the city, and provide them the option to opt out, so that their tax rate would not be exempt. That notice was provided shortly after your January meeting, and we received written notice from the fire district and the school district that they were exercising their opportunity to opt out. Those two taxing jurisdictions represent almost half of the mill rate that is levied upon state and property owners. So the 20% exemption and value that would apply to each, for each floor, with those two taxing jurisdictions opting out, really becomes a 10% or 11% exemption, not the full 20%, because their full tax rate will apply. Just so you're aware that you, it won't be having the impact that theoretically it could. So, the ordinance that you have in front of you was based, quite frankly, on a great deal of plagiarism from an ordinance recently enacted by a city in Portland Metro. It was, I tweaked it to make it more appropriate to Staton for here and there. It was sent down to the city attorney for review, based on their review comments, other changes were made. And you've got it in front of you that lays out all of the details of how you apply, the information that is needed, what the criteria for approval is, et cetera, et cetera. So I can answer questions about the details of the code if you have them. Otherwise, you've got before you the ordinance for your consideration.
Dan, did anyone, I hope the lawyers did, just run a what-if scenario? Just put a, put a number on this, or a situation, and see if it's possible for ordinary people to run through this and figure out the numbers on this, and actually apply for one of these, the exemptions?
It's, no, I don't know whether they did that or not. I don't think that the, the application requirements are really all that difficult or onerous. Either, the place where it may be a bit difficult, or there might be some question as to the applicability, or the approvability, would be for renovation of existing buildings. If someone's building a new building, it's going to be pretty obvious that what was there before and what was there afterwards. But it's really based on the tax assessor's assessment of it, and the tax assessor's office is going to do what they do regardless of this, and then it's a matter of taking the various percentages off.
Two things. Number one, just to kind of address you, Mr. Mayor, I know that I used to work with developers and property owners and get the tax breaks for mixed use and low, and affordable housing units all the time. Developers are very, very aware, and it's not that hard to apply for this, if it runs along the same lines as the federal sort of things do. People do it all the time. My question was about the school district and the fire department. Is there any recourse regarding their opting out? Is that, is that like in stone, that they have the ability to opt out of this?
As I read the statute, yes. Because I forget, I think it was actually the school superintendent that asked me, "Oh, well, what if we want to do it on a case-by-case basis?" And so I went back and again read the statute. The statute says that we have to give them thirty days' notice before we adopt the ordinance, and they have to say whether they're opting in, or they have to say they're opting out if otherwise...
Do you think that they're aware of the benefit that the city could get from this? Or do you think that they just said, "Oh, it's a tax, so no, we're going to opt out of it?"
I think they're aware...
I mean, so I'm wondering if...
I think they're aware of the benefit that the city could get from this, but do not see the benefit that their jurisdiction can get from this.
Well, I think someone needs to tell them that what benefits the city benefits them.
Mr. Mayor.
It's nice.
Priscilla.
Doesn't work that way.
One word, urban renewal.
I, I know, unfortunately.
Yeah, we could put, in my experience, we put two urban renewal proposals up, and both were shot down, mainly, we don't want to point fingers here, but mainly because the fire district opposed it. And they are just, they're so underfunded that they just can't miss a single dollar.
It has, they, they, during the last urban renewal stuff, they put out information again that was erroneous and untrue.
Uh huh. Well, but it, it worked.
It did, it worked.
Yeah, anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
We don't want to beat on them too much, we need them.
Mr. Mayor, one question, please.
Go ahead, please.
Dan, I have a question as far as determinate, the determination of the city to certify or deny a certification, is it discretionary determination? The determination is final and is not subject to judicial or administrative review. That doesn't really sit well with me. Is there a reason why they couldn't bring it to the council and appeal it? It's 3.16.100, line two, page 10 of 14.
Um, no, you could provide for an appeal process. Again, the model I used said, the city staff makes the decision whether the criteria are met, and you look with it.
Gotcha.
Any more?
Go ahead. There was one more question. You made reference to possibly losing a thousand bucks. That was your guess, but, so we don't know.
It would be, quite frankly, would be pure guesswork.
Gotcha.
To provide some estimate of the potential lost revenue to the city from new construction, because I don't have any way of gauging what a new building would be valued at. My staff report made reference to looking at the existing multi-story buildings in the downtown area, and what their potential rent, new investment in renovating them might be.
Gotcha.
And then applying the city's mill rate, the city's mill rate, not the $15 the taxpayers pay, but the $2.90 whatever cents that comes to the city per thousand.
Okay.
And if we, if we had a fiscal loss of $1,000 a year, I'd be surprised, from renovating existing buildings. Now, obviously, a new, a new three-story, 10,000-square-foot ground area building goes up, that, I don't know whether you're talking $500,000 in assessed value, or a million and a half dollars in assessed value.
We brought that to downtown. With that kind of people living downtown, we wouldn't need to worry about it. We'd be good, we'd be doing good.
All right. Any more? We've got some options. This is 1020, or 20, 1020. We can approve the first consideration of ordinance 1020, or with modifications, or not to establish a vertical housing development zone. What would you folks like to do? Somebody don't, oh, yeah, one's please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm good with it, provided we could have an amendment to have the determination appeal to the council if it comes to that. If no one else is concerned with it, we're okay.
Okay. And the amendment would look like?
3.16.100, line two, maybe A would be, or just change it to, the determination is subject to council review, or however you want to define it.
Oh.
Are you good with that, Dan?
If that's the wishes of the council, we can add an appeal procedure for your second consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, please.
Determination done depending on...
Appeal.
Subject to council review.
Sure.
Thank you. And that's 3.16.100, 3.100, okay. All right, so as amended, approve the first, first consideration of ordinance 1020 as amended? Or do we need to amend it first?
Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't, anyway, go ahead.
I'll offer a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1020 as amended, with modification, excuse me.
Okay. A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion, and a second, to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1020 with...
An appeals process.
With amended considerations.
Changes to incorporate an appeals process and direct staff to incorporate those changes into the ordinance before the ordinance is presented to the city council for a second consideration.
Do you remember what that sounds like?
I wrote it.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you, Dan.
Discussion on this amended ordinance. Well, as long as somebody's got it written down, so I don't have to sit here and try to scratch it out. Anything else? Alyssa, would you do it another time, please?
Of course. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
I'm refusing myself from this decision.
Okay. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Eusselman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. One exception.
Zero, one, okay. Sounds better. All right. So this will, this is going to come back to us, isn't it? Yeah, the June fourth meeting, all right. We're going to switch gears here a little bit. Chief, would you take us through ordinance 1021, amending municipal code 5.04.03, creating state and municipal code 5.50 relating to pharmaceutical drug disposal? Please.
Mayor and council, I bring to you tonight the ordinance 1021. The issue that we have is that disposing of unused pharmaceuticals has become a nationwide problem, in that unused medications are getting in the hands of people illegally, and adding to the drug problem in the country. It's also the problem that causes a problem for public works, in that the medications get into the water system, and they cannot be removed out through the filtration system, and they end up back into the drinking water. And so one of the things that's been happening over the last several years is there's been drug take-back programs, where drugs can be brought back into police departments and turned back in. Problem with that is that it's become a huge liability to the city when the officers collect those, because it's very difficult to monitor, because they all get dumped in one big bin, and it's, you can't, you can't, you can't account for every type of medication that comes in there. There's also the risk of some of the medications are absorbed through the skin, and so when the officers, if it gets up, touches them, and gets up against the skin, they absorb it, could become, get OD issues because of that, and contaminated. It's also very costly to the department, and I figured out, over the last several years, it's costing just a rough figure, about $800 a month, and staff time to operate that program. Recently, one of the pharmacies in town started taking that program on and doing it themselves, because they believed, after I talked to them, that it was really the pharmaceutical's responsibility to take that back, very similar to the grocery stores taking in the can returns. And so they felt it was their responsibility to do it, and they could actually do it for far cheaper than what we're able to do it. I think they're able to do it for about $180 a month, is what they were doing it as. After talking to... After talking to them, they really wanted to encourage the other pharmacies in town to take this on as well as their responsibility. And so I put together this, this ordinance to require the other pharmacies in town to, or all the pharmacies to do that as a requirement, just to help with this problem instead of having the, the city taking on that cost. I've talked to all of the pharmacies. The one was definitely very excited that we were willing to, to put this in the code. The other ones really didn't have an opinion on it either way. And I talked to them on more than one occasion. Each occasion, they said that they would forward it to their, their corporate offices and I never got a response back from, from either one, from any of them actually, other than the one that was for it. Although I did get one, one phone call back saying that they did forward the information on, and I did, anything back from the corporates.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, folks?
Chief, if they're doing it voluntarily right now, why have an ordinance?
Because one of them is, one of them is doing it voluntarily and the other ones are not. They would really like to, the one that is doing it would really like it that the other ones would step up and do it.
I get that, but you, you would think that the association pharmaceutical, whatever, would come up with a position statement or something?
Yeah, they, they weren't, the other ones weren't willing to do it voluntarily when I asked them if that was something that they'd be interested in. There is a county in California that is actually doing this as well, not in the same format that we're doing it, but we're doing it, they're doing it where they, the city is maintaining it and monitoring it at drop sites around, around the county, or around the city and, but the pharmacies are paying for it.
Question, Mayor? How do they secure the drop-off bins so that people can't break into them and?
They're set at, the drop-off bins are similar to a post office box where you can drop it in, you can't get it back out. They would be required to be inside the store next to the counter and they would also be required to secured. Ours was secured with a, with a heavy-duty logging chain and lock that was very difficult to, to brought, to break. Actually, it had two of them on it. That's how we did it. And then there was a camera on ours.
Right, so this seems like a no-brainer, because they already have drugs there and they're already secure, a secure place. It just seems like the perfect, perfect way to do a drug take-back. I always thought that it seemed, the other way didn't seem like a good, a good idea to me. It was like, but yeah, we're going to drop them off here and who's getting them and where are they going and everything? But for the drugstores to have them back again, where there's already massive drugs that they are monitoring and counting and taking care of, seems exactly like what it should be.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts and questions?
Point if the State and Pharmacy, Buy Mart and Safeway are the only pharmacies?
Correct.
Yeah. I think Buy Mart and Safeway can certainly afford it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we hope so. So what would you folks like to do with this?
Re-approve.
A motion to approve, motion to approve ordinance number 1021.
Is there a second?
Please.
Give a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, a second, thank you. Let's, is there any other discussion? Any other comments on this? Alyssa? No, we don't need this. Hey, we don't need you on this, keep on typing. Let's just go to a voice vote. All in favor on ordinance 1021, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing done will declare that past five to zero and moving right along. Preparation of an RFP for consultant services to develop economic development strategies. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you. During your goal-setting last February, we discussed doing an economic development strategy program and quite frankly, finally getting around to getting a request for proposals written. And as I've done that, I came up with some really questions, issues that I wanted to get council's feedback on, direction and specificity, et cetera. As currently drafted, the scope of work that for the consultants includes the following activities: conducting community outreach slash workshops, et cetera, to identify desired development activity in the city. Are there particular types of businesses that we would like to see or prefer to not see? Identify current development regulations that are detrimental to achieving our development goals. Compile a list of available local and state incentives to business development. Make recommendations for local incentives that we don't provide. Identify key labor market characteristics of, of the labor force here in the city. Identify what are the comparative advantages in statin, utility costs, the, the widespread provision of broadband, what's it called, fiber service throughout the city. For instance, identify transportation and other infrastructure constraints on development activity and make recommendations for funding for improvements. Compare utility costs between statin and other similar-sized mid-valley communities and make recommendations to our utility rate structure that may help us achieve our goals. Investigate whether our annexation policies and procedures and land use review procedures adversely impact economic development activity and to make recommendations for changes in land use regulation to reflect the desired types of uses or to restrict those that are not desired. So those are, those are the tasks that I sort of came up with in, in drafting this. And my questions to you, are there other issues that I haven't hit on that, that you have in mind? Are there things that I did list that you don't think we should quote "bother with", unquote, that aren't worthwhile pursuing? And, and perhaps more importantly, how broadly or narrowly do you envision defining the term economic development? In some communities, that means looking just for manufacturing or industrial business growth. In other communities, it means any business activity. And in other communities that I've worked with, they've looked at a much broader definition of economic development and include pretty much any activity that results in an economic benefit to the broader community. That would include the less money we spend on electricity and fuel in the community if we're more energy efficient and we're sending less money out of the community, then we're economically better off, even if there aren't any more jobs or better jobs created. You know, the idea if you save $2, that's just as good as earning $2. Those are the, the questions that, that I, I raised to get your feedback so that the RFP reflects what you've got, what you'd like to see us working on as we develop these strategies.
Or SDCs, any of the, in any of these sub-points in your mind or not?
Um, no, they're, they haven't been, but they could be.
It, you know, we can...
Would you like some feedback on this at some certain time in the future?
We, we, if you're not prepared to give it tonight, then we can put it on the agenda for June 4th.
Okay.
Or, or a month, or, or whatever.
How about a reminder on June 4th's agenda?
We can't even do it.
Be thinking about this, it's going to come back, that kind of thing? Could we do that?
At the, at the council's pleasure.
Yeah.
Okay. You folks okay with that?
We're okay.
Good. All right, let's go on then. Dan, thank you. Good stuff. Let's see, finance department report, Cindy and Elizabeth, and that's in. There it is. Delinquent notices, number of checks. I think in spite of somebody's comments earlier this evening, we do a pretty good job of keeping track of money and where it goes. Better than pretty good, really good. But there's always some that see conspiracy around the corner, so. I saw Bill back there writing for the Statesman Journal and hoping he wasn't writing all that down and considering the source on all that.
There's a question on the number of checks and Keith, I think it's just probably a quarterly thing, but we went from 210,000 to 772,000 between March and April.
Yeah, I'd have to look at specifically. I don't know if that's where we had, there's a couple of things. It could be...
I didn't mean to open that up again. Our friend already...
Well, no, if you look at the chief's friend of you, Hank.
Down here.
Yeah, I don't, I'm looking at it.
It could be for our retirement account, it could be for our insurance. I'd have to look and see what specifically quarterly expense we have.
We already went through the, the terrible things that our finance department does. Let's not beat it to death tonight.
We have, we have a responsibility for 500,000, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, if we went there, we've been there, let's go on. Uh, let's see. Hmm, Rich, chief, police department stats.
If the stats before you, I don't have a thing to add to, to the stats except for the, like that now that the weather's changed and is getting much nicer, ask you and everybody else to, to be mindful of kids that are out playing, doing outdoor activities as you're driving around.
Okay. Are we starting to whack away at the tall grass?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good.
We have a code enforcement officer that's a, a part-time position. The other one is about to be, we're doing interviews for that, positioned to rehire for that. But the one that is there is working very heavily on those tall grasses. Has addressed numerous of, ones of them already.
I'd like to sit down on those interviews and grill the prospective possibles about, I let the, I like to let the grass grow. Get the hell out of here. Quit bothering me.
I was thinking I'd like that job. You get to go and tell people to do stuff?
Okay, thanks, chief. Any questions for, for chief on that one? What's wrong with tall grass? Get out of here. Lance, public work director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have my monthly operating report for April. I have nothing further to add to it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Not a question, but a comment and a commendation to Lance. The community garden, I was down there putting in my stuff on Friday and there were six other people there, including, I, I took down some tools, donated tools, there's one guy who is going to build a little temporary tool shed for us and another family was going to buy, talk to Lisa today and see if they could get adjacent plots. It really was a good community thing. Thank you.
Thoughts on progress on Virginia Street?
I'll take him.
Oh, no, they, they, no, what?
I'm here.
What are you hearing? And how do you, just looking at it?
It looks to be going very good.
Okay, good, yeah.
Do I, I don't, I don't have my ear to the, the city's pulse like some of you may, so I'm here though. If you're hearing something different, I'd be happy to hear it.
I'm amazed one, one family hasn't bent my ear yet, ear yet about the inconvenience, but I'm hoping they won't, but they probably will. But good, we're, we're getting it done.
He bent mine, he's happy the street's getting fixed.
What?
Dawn's happy the street's getting fixed. He bent my ear.
Why don't you get up close to that so we can...
So Dawn is happy the street's getting fixed. He bent my ear.
That's amazing. Okay. All right, thank you, Lance. Dan, planning and development director?
You've got my monthly report. I've got nothing more to add.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Dan, anything?
You sure you weren't too long-winded in this report, huh, Dan?
I had a week's vacation in April, so...
New single-family dwelling, two of them? $30,000 in SDCs paid? Whoopie! Library director's report, Hannah, thank you for being here.
Mayor and council, you have my report in front of you and our stats. I would like to say that tickets are on sale for our sixth annual father-daughter ball and also that the 11th of June is the beginning of summer reading, so come in and sign up.
All right, busy, busy. And the new roof is almost on?
Almost on.
Almost on, good. Good, good, good. All right, just about done. Any more comments from the public? At this time, business from the city manager, Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Okay, business from myself, nothing other than an announcement that one of our young people who regularly attends meetings, impossible to draw opinions out of him, but he's been assigned to teach English at a, a remote part of Mongolia. His proud father shared with us that there's only, it's only a three-day camel ride from the nearest vestige of civilization and that he will be, there will be maybe a letter home at some point. It's not exile, but it's about the closest thing to it. And we're impressed and pleased that you're, that's a real adventure and I'm, I'm excited for you.
If he hasn't changed his mind yet.
I don't think there's an option out on that one. Anyway, anything from the council this evening? Okay, public hearings, 2018, 19 fiscal year budget and revenue sharing, that's next meeting. Revised fee schedule, a CCROS agreement, and the Shaff Road water line. Anything else this evening? Let's go home.